Heavenly Father, we thank you for today, Lord. Thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us every day. We ask you to be with those who serve us every day, Lord, those who are in our military, Lord, serving abroad. We ask you to be with those in Ukraine, or we ask you to be where be with us. Make important decisions and for our people.
And I pledge allegiance to the American I pledge allegiance to the our nation under God, through the Lord Jesus Christ. Why? I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state God on you this.
Roll yes. Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Howard?
Here.
Councilmember Colan?
Yeah.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Councilmember uh Councilmember Wora?
Here.
Yeah.
The sound of audiences allow three minutes for persons to embrace the speaker must identify themselves before speaking. Speaker must and lose the From I'm a citizen of the United States of America and resident by distribution constitution I like We want Randy Gonzalez here. I do anyway as our city manager. There's a family reunion that I believe has happened here in our community that we desperately need. Our land needs to know we're the people I need to know in here. There's a father-daughter connection that our land family connection that our everybody really needs to be healed with. What's happening here with our leadership? Are y'all comfortable with a signata like this and hand motions like this and then being taken and brought to God only knows where? I mean, you don't know where I just how I gave y'all a big hug and put you in a bigger grace and a sphere of love and where did I bring you? Where did I bring you to? And do I have the credential on the earth to be doing this? And do we need a credential?
Ms. Burwell. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome some new members. I wanted to say my name is Ms. Burwell and I lead a thirteen oh two button for that. Because of my recreation detail and I noticed after these three years at the tax department, as a volunteer, how much here is to the community. In fact, she's here today and several members of the community. We were very upset to see this sign in our area, maybe the designated, I'm sure in other areas. So we took it up after ourselves to order this side. This side that we like, this is because three hundred fifty dollars, which we pay, we like to donate hundred dollars on this side. Right? So we cannot afford to go three fifty. So I had met with this Gonzalez and suggested that perhaps the city will have us to do hundred fifty. Obviously, I advise we can go whether you are the protectors of the citizens of La Guerta Vista, we need your approval. And we need to take that sign, if you approve it, we need to take the sign out. And place this side. And that is why I'm here to help this Gonzalez. You cannot make a decision, but I wanted to show that the community does that. Scale and decide that with me. This is all we can do economically besides when like the padre vista condominiums, the person that is there Muica makes the size for me from rest. So you cannot make a decision, but if it's all right, can I approach it three days and see what they decided? Or can they let me know what they decide? But I would suggest that all the signs need to be replaced in my opinion. Thank you very much. And congratulations, those new faces I see. New face, new face. This is
Ms. Kathy Barbara Spanian. Hi, guys. Barbara Spanian and I'm work, as you know, and I'm also on the Ajoa Master Board, not with master, but community. So I've been trying to do some new things in my neighborhood and of Airbnb and VRB. Goes a lot of parking and it's causing some issues. So what I would like to do is to see if we could change the city ordinance on Lakewood Drive. It is no parking from eleven P M to seven A M. And I would like to ask you guys if you would be willing to change the whole city to be no parking on the street from eleven P M to seven A M. That's it. Thanks, guys.
So I can make one direction to prove this. So motion. Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Colan?
Yes.
Councilmember Wora?
Yes.
Councilmember David Data?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Much of best. Okay, two financial reports, review of the financial reports.
So I provided you the same reports. It's a month you have the report on it. And then you have the general summary budget. And check register, the monthly statement in there as well, but just to also make it over there. But I never so if you have any questions about any of the checks written or
any questions? The question? The bar?
Okay, so on the police department budget. Well, first of all, it says is that this budget from ten one to nine, what's the budget for? What's the time?
To date, to date. So we run it from nine thirty. It just is so absolutely everything. So
So is it till like last month, yesterday?
It's for the report date on the report date is four three fifty four.
So we do halfway through the year, correct? We might some line on the police department budget salaries. Curious, I wasn't when you guys gave the raise to the police department. I'm all in favor of course. But it was a fateful night, obviously. And was there a budget amendment to increase their budget for the twenty? I'm asking you.
No, there was not. I don't think it was an actual budget. So
you will be older budget at the end of the year on that one. It's not from overtime because overtime's only nine point five percent.
Unless we do the budget adjustment. Because I used to, I wasn't
You gotta do something.
I wasn't here for that. I mean, actually either, but my understanding is coming from the 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 difference of what this happened. That would have been. And so Absolutely, I'm watching.
And then budget. Particularly a plenty of money for some. One that have only twenty four percent. So yeah, good news for stats.
What I request that we just have money to offset this. That's okay. I'll go back. I think that's sure. Yes. Anything else? I can see ordinance twenty two for one consideration and possible action on seeing a reading of ordinance twenty three through oh two and maybe ordinance regulations of one.
This is just the second reading of the arbitrage disposal with three regarding the receptacles on the dock sites and there was no changes that were given just on the first reading. So it's presented as it was for the second.
One wow, one minor area that that was revised to a current discussion having counsel that it recognizes some exemptions for small temporary signs related to sale or sale or rent or development.
This on the trash?
Oh, very sorry. I yes, I did. Yes, I did. I misnumbered the draft. I haven't Yes, that's all.
It's any any more discussion?
It'll be based on processes to notice that always the last thing that's off, which is no exception.
That's
Okay, no, no, that's I just wasn't requirement that the grant was it seems out of the base of compliance with the something else.
Yeah. All right. This is the second
What motion?
Can we just, I just wasn't able to follow that. The so the question was, is it always a right for from what I'm
Yes.
Or if anybody's uncomfortable with this order? Despite the bounds or up against this motion?
When we have not done any, that is the way they they do. I've not seen any and that have a driver. Or that's that's not the last thing.
It's just, we're just trying to make sure that we cover every but most drawing of this. Yeah.
No, I mean, it's just what we've experienced, but I don't know that there's a rule book that says you have to, you know, I don't know. The contractor has to go in as the way they go.
So the building sets, so the build has to qualify the foundation.
They can take it off.
Or take it, or they can take it off at that one.
Because the problem they're running into is because at the end of the construction, what they're doing is they're working on irrigate to finalize the yard and the driveway. So they run out of room for this container when you have the irrigation trying to put their stuff in and the prime trying to pour the driveway. So that we were approached when they had to pull off container off because they were just moving around and it was just, or the owner who was held to move that off to have their irrigation done. And so that that was, that was the
And I can say that there's a lot of yards. Whenever that happens, they're sitting there with dirt on them quite a lot.
Yeah.
And I acknowledge contractor an obligation to clear this. There's never team wise. So that's, I'm good.
You can always place them under the the litter. And the litter, Morgan, exactly.
Motion for my congressman Gonzalez.
Yeah. Or just number twenty two, twenty two oh one. And writing or stretching or also
Senator Warren, this emotional two oh one, as Mr. Gonzalez said, if we can, Mr. Gonzalez, say Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Colan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Wora?
Yes.
Councilmember David Data?
Yes.
Mayor Smith? So the ordinance twenty two oh two to drive ordinance, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty one is a typo right there. Oh, my joining side. This phone and this power. This was the sixth meeting
There's a typo on on the, it should be under tap or it's a tap or in mind, but there is, there is a typo. I labeled it oh one and it's it should be oh two. That's why I jumped in talking about it.
Okay. Everybody? Everybody good? That's what it?
Yeah. It didn't get mistaken by the electronic origin.
So any more discussion?
I have a question. This is to see like signs on on city land. Does this affect that at all?
Well, the 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 city's signs on city land or or someone on city would all be subject to the silence.
Yeah, but it it doesn't affect like who's allowed to put signs on city land.
No, if it's city land, we we have
Exactly. Just making sure it doesn't change.
And of course, our signs, that's they are assigned belonging to, if they fall under the exempt category from some of the technical requirements.
Yeah.
If we have a safe user who's renting space to use a sign on on city land, it wouldn't be a government sign and therefore might not fall under the exact type of situation. But but yes, they would all be, they would all be subject to the political parties.
So if we have, if we leave east land do that ordinance, like is it our land?
It's our land, wouldn't necessarily cloak with governmental status for the purpose of of the government. In the sense, perhaps a government user to follow the definition.
Because the question would be, if we have a land that we lease, we control, who can put signs on it?
Yes. As the, as the, as the, as the user will secure your use.
Yes.
So thank you.
Any other discussions? I don't think section where I have signs on the street where it says that by any street road vehicle or anybody in town needs to have a specific size of numbers. How much time do you give everyone to follow this new ordinance? Or are the ones existing ready for that?
Well, but grandfathering probably wouldn't have much application to this section because if this part didn't change, this is as as it existed in prior, prior works. But in terms of how much time a new user would have to reply with this provision, this provision become applicable to some new development or something else. It should be immediately, but practically it's whenever the enforcement effort comes around, whenever the person who's obligated to follow the section is like fails to meet that obligation and gets forced against that person.
Yeah. Yeah. Question I have on section eight. Challenge for private sales signs. They are hands drawn and does everybody has to be prepared as per real estate sign, rental sign?
Real estate.
The the real estate big rental and open house signs are part of the, what I introduced on revision into the exemption. And that and that was, that rose out of the discussion we had of the ordinance at the last one. Because we had, when the old ordinance structure, we have some language that defined but those signs without actually containing that effect provision that either was required, they both are in a team like discussion in since the road or special last time was that those signs should be exempt because they're small, they're temporary. Garage sale sign would be similar to those, although they're not, we covered the exceptions. There's they're up for such a short time that we probably never get around to it. We're seeking organization against the the hand if we're something that we're problematic.
Yeah, or do you think we should just
to those, to those sites? Typically, the problem that I see with garage sales signs will be the signs themselves, the frequency of the garage sales. And those are subject if not covered by
They're they're out a potentially short period of time. No, I just think that it was within the exemption of the other
I mean, if that's council's pleasure, it would be, you know, nothing, no effort at all to add a temporary hand roll garage sale to the exemption. And the ordinance still passed ordinance tonight, subject to that, that makes one more letter subsection or subsection of section.
Yeah.
If that's, if that's an exemption that council
I think we need to cut off. We can think about something we should I agree with you. It's the last thing you want to neighbor, not liking another neighbor and then reporting him instead of garage sale sign up and getting mad at us because we're not enforcing it and and all this is under the exclusion that because that's something that happens a lot. A lot of people have garage shelves on our community and I think we should just keep everybody safe, essentially, in this. So yeah, that's from the council. I move to approve the second reading of ordinance two zero two two dash oh one regarding sign regulation with the addition of the yard scale to the appropriate section. Motion for by Mr. Gobio. I would support the exemption of the garage sale signs added by ready? Councilwoman Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Colan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Wora?
Yes.
Councilmember David Data?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Much of best.
Mayor, on this one, because the full text of the of the caption is not contained within the motion like ordinance number twenty twenty two dash two, an ordinance to town council, which town will release the document to use for regulations, signs, billboards, number of houses and buildings, other advertising signs, and this entry territory restriction, setting forth the design standards, size, location requirements provided for these at the field, appealing any and all ordinance or parts of ordinance with like patient establishing a penalty regarding other matter related.
I can fire resolution, please make sure I have consideration and action to approve resolution to a night to adopt a season procedure. This importance for this to run on Treasury American state law.
So this is just a call to some procedures that recommended that we can begin complying on all of the grant money that we're receiving from so we presented one that we
input this
Yes.
Any questions for the session? On the resolution possible actions to adopt procedure on use of U S Treasury question will form a better mayor's defense of this yes? Senator Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yeah.
Colan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Wora?
Yes.
Councilmember David Data?
Yes.
Yes. Much of best. Six resolution consideration of for warning resolution to any Texas and application to main this post going back to the
Yes, I'll go ahead. This is again another resolution required by the law for representing us. And just regulatory matters. Pretty, pretty frequently. There's another application by agents in their passing this resolution. I'm passing this resolution.
There is. Resolutions. Deny. Appeals applications.
For Howard? Councilmember Colin?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
For Wora?
Yes.
For DeGaleva?
Yes.
Second position is.
Use it to.
Yeah. Yeah, regarding seal. All versus the city council as well as according to. Motion to exact decision.
Sir.
Councilmember Carter? Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Colin?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Wora?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGaleva?
Yes.
I make a motion to reopen our use to go out for city manager starting tomorrow ending. At 12:00 PM. I'll second. I have some nice. I know.
Uh, councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, motion fast. And the motion to return.
Councilmember Colin?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember DeGaleva?
Yes.
Next.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.